Ready? Good evening. This special meeting of the... Good evening. Good evening. What's better? Welcome to the regular meeting of the Annapolis City Council for Monday, July 10th, 2017. We will be called to order at 7:10 PM. At this time, would everyone willing and able, please stand for the invocation given by Alderman Budge, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, sir. Mayor Panalides.
Present.
Alderman Budge.
Here.
Alderman Peon. Alderman Pindell Charles.
Present.
Alderwoman Finlayson.
Present.
Alderman Litman.
Present.
Alderman Kirby.
Present.
Alderman Piper.
Present.
Alderman Arnett.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, the first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
I've got a motion from some colleagues that want to amend the agenda. So I entertain a motion to add GA 3217, which is the Janus Holman Grant Program for Land Trust from the Preservation of Maryland Environmental Trust. Mr. Mayor, do we have that in front of us? I haven't seen that. I believe the request came from one of the council members. Mr. Andrews, do you?
I don't think we have that.
I think it came from the Finance Department, Nikki. The Finance Department, Nikki? Maybe it was Chris.
It came from the Finance Department. I still don't have it. Do you see? I don't have it paper or electronically. We'll just do it at the next one then.
Mr. Mayor, is it time-sensitive, Mr. Miller?
I do not believe so. It's one of the grants that... One of the grants that came in from, I believe, Malia Rovin, and was presented during the last Finance Committee meeting. Do you have it?
Is this one the Finance Committee dealt with the other day?
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Finlayson? Mr. Mayor, I was... Unfortunately, I wasn't at the meeting the other day, but if the committee considered it, I would move to add it to the agenda.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Just that we get a copy of it before we can vote on it.
Of course. Make sure you have it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Madam City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is a presentation beginning with ID 265-17, a video presentation on the Roger Pittmoyer Recreation Center member testimonies, Part 1 and 2.
If a representative from the Rec and Parks Department would like to play the video for us all? Bruce?
I'm Bruce Abercrombie, and I was hoping he would show up behind me. City TV anyhow.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think I was interviewed for this, and we were asked... Citizens were asking what they could do to support our Rec Center, Pittmoyer Rec Center. And so Mr. Trader came up with the idea of this video that Mr. Abercrombie put together.
That's what he would have said.
I've been a member of the Pittmoyer Gym for about five years now, and I love it. I come every day. I enjoy every bit of it, from when I first walk in, the ladies at the front desk, to the whole crew that works here. It's clean. I love the classes. The kids' zone is awesome. Ms. Shay is wonderful. She's pretty much raised my kids and come in here and get a great workout. It's like another family here. Personal trainers are great. The yoga's wonderful, and I enjoy it. It's a part of my daily routine.
It's a wonderful environment for children. The staff is so supportive. I don't think there's anything better in the city for the children. Seeing the kids playing basketball, playing sports, running around instead of playing video games. So if you want a fantastic experience for your children, I've raised three boys in the centers, in the city of Annapolis. This is a wonderful, wonderful opportunity for you as parents to see your kids compete, see your kids learn to be a good teammate, see your kids learn to set goals.
I found a home. It's kind of like... I like the people, the facilities well-maintained and clean. And I can come here and walk without worrying about what the weather is.
Mr. Trader, you can come to the front.
Coming along or anything else. It's just a nice thing to have in the heat of the summer, and they're cool in the winter. So I enjoy being here, and I enjoy just seeing the other people. I think it's well-attended, and I'd like to keep it available to the community as well as the members.
Recently, I've been taking the Turn Back the Clock classes and the yoga classes, and the teachers are just exceptional, and the price is right. And I've just met very nice and relaxed people here, and it's becoming a great place to come.
For a period of time, I went to the... To another gym. And there weren't a lot of people there who looked like me. And I appreciate coming to trust them for that reason because I feel like there's diversity in the attendees here. There's diversity in the staff, and it makes me feel good that I can support a recreational center in my community that in turn supports members of my community.
I got a personal trainer, and I had the advantage of using all of the equipment, and I absolutely love it here. You know, we have a lot of seniors that come from Bay Woods and other communities who support this center. This is their, you know, physical activity. So it leads to the good health of our community. You know, we've got wonderful athletic fields. There are so many different activities going on here at Pittmoyer. You know, if you come in here on a Saturday morning, the volume is way up because the men are playing basketball and the smaller kids are doing something on another court. And then there's folks climbing in the rock wall. You know, there's young women down in the dance classes and the seniors in the yoga classes. So there is just any number of activities going on here. There is something for everyone here.
I'm standing here in this spot because of the posters that are behind me are medical posters that I've prepared that are distributed all over the world. I've sold about 10 million posters, medical charts, all kinds of materials in the medical industry. And so I just gave the gym, the facility here, PMRC, a collection of my posters to present to the membership so that they could learn about their bodies, the muscular, skeletal, respiratory systems and all of that. And so I'm, you know, very happy with this facility. And I met the architect and congratulated him on a beautiful job that he did in creating this facility for the Annapolis community.
My family and I come here. We love the facility. My wife and I both work out here. It's a great place to relax, kind of put the kids downstairs. They love it. They love playing in the velocity. They love the... They love the teachers. They have a great time with Shay in particular. And we've just had a really good experience here. And yeah, not only does we work out here, but actually we have several meetings. We use the recreation rooms very often for our church. And we just have some... A lot of our events and services and things we have there. And it's always been really great. A lot of very accommodating and very, very helpful staff. We really love everything here and hope you'll come and try it out as well.
Okay, I love Pittmoyer because I get to play pickleball about four or five times a week. And I've been playing pickleball for now almost a year and a half, and it's improved my health. It's improved my blood pressure. And it's given me some kind of social activity. We have a great club, and Pittmoyer has been most supportive of our club and given us the auxiliary gym here and has allowed us to use other courts and also provide markers on our courts so we have lines for the play. So they've been very... They've even... They keep the place clean, and they're welcoming. It's a welcoming staff, and the club just loves coming here.
Mr. Trader, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, 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 sir, I would. Is my mic on? Yes, I first want to apologize for my tardiness. No excuse. I would also like to thank Mr. Bruce Abercrombie, who produced this video. He is a videographer for the city of Annapolis. He did a wonderful job. It cost little or no money, a day and a half of his salary and the DVD that it was printed on. This is an example of social marketing. I came up with this project as an acting director, believe it or not, because I found the need that we needed to really inform the public about what we offer at the Pittmoyer Recreation Center. And the social marketing concept is a concept that allows the consumer to express their feelings and their understanding of what the product is all about. So we thought this was an ideal opportunity to... For the members of the Pittmoyer Recreation Center to express themselves about how they feel and what they are getting out of the Pittmoyer Recreation Center and the programs that we offer.
Alderwoman Finlayson?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Trader, will that video be on the city's website?
Oh, it absolutely will, and it will also be on City TV and other social media as we unravel it. But we wanted to give the opportunity for Mr. Mayor, as well as the City Council, to see it first.
Well, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Trader.
Thank you.
Madam City Clerk, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is petitions, reports, and communications, beginning with reports by committees.
Is there any other person who would like to present a report? Okay. Would you please present our next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is comments by the general public.
During comments by the general public, you can speak on anything that is not already scheduled for a public hearing. So if you came this evening to talk about the Paris Climate Agreement or the Market House City Doc, those public hearings will be right after this one. And there was nobody signed up in advance to speak. If you would like to do so now, is your opportunity. Could you please tap the mic? Make sure your microphone's on? Thank you.
I must as a native Annapolis and a person of color comment on what was obviously shown in the video, which was a bit humorous, but not humorous. When she said she likes one there because she sees people that look like her. And in the entire video, there was not one person who was even interviewed who looked like her. And there was no person who looked like her in the background playing. And that is... For me, without the video, I wouldn't even comment. But one thing I do hear from citizens in the city of Annapolis who are not of a certain socioeconomic status and bracket, that access to places like that has become limited. And I don't know if anyone would agree with that. I can't necessarily say people in this audience would. But hold on, it's a very serious thing because I grew up in this city. And granted, I didn't live in a public housing. And granted, I didn't actually deal with socioeconomic issues. But those places were full of kids. And they were full of children and young people that... That for their environment, recreation is a huge thing. It's an opportunity to give them a chance to rub elbows with people from other communities. It's an opportunity for them to obviously get rid of energy that they had built up. But it's also an opportunity for them to feel that where they live, in terms of the place that they live geographically, is supporting them as young people. And what I've heard is that access to that place is something that parents are charged and that there's membership. Now, I don't want to get into all of the other socio-psychological reasons of what that means when you don't have money and you live in a city where if I ask the question... Because it's Pittmoyer. If I ask the question, is there something comparable to that that people of this city can go to that they don't have to pay for and they don't have that membership for? And if we pause for one second and say, oh, I'm not quite sure, then why is it called Parks and Recreation? Isn't the city needs extra revenue for that? And if the answer is yes or no, then can I honestly... And again, it's with all due respect, I hope I'm not defending you, but we're all citizens in the place we live. And so next year, when we talk about drug use and crime and the scourge of certain communities, ask yourself, is there something like that that exists in some of these communities that we always talk about? Or have we stripped those communities of basketball? And then you show a video of like plush workout equipment, two boys, people running around, all of them. None of them look like me. None of them. Am I wrong? Right? We all saw the videos. Did you see anyone look like me? And this is a diverse city. Thank you.
Mr. Rau... Mr. Rau? I was in the video. But I would invite you... I would invite you to sit down with Mr. Trader and learn about all the different programs because young people are given access to the Rec Center from a variety of communities, and they are not charged a fee. So, you know, there is an attempt to look out for those that might not have access and the financial resources. But sit down with Mr. Trader so he can share with you all of what goes on there. Thank you.
If there's anyone else who would like to address the council, now is your opportunity. And if you could all state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Mrs. Mary Byrow. I would love to see more recreational activities in... I'm sorry, I'm not used to this. In Newtown 20. I've been doing a little bit of investigating about Newtown 20, and there's a big separation between what the mayor's office can do with communities that are more controlled by the HACA Housing Authority of the city of Annapolis. It kind of seems like the mayor's office controls it, but they don't. And we would welcome more involvement from people of any color, any Republican, Democrat, we don't care. We would love to see more help for the children there, for the elderly people there. A lot of people are suffering. A lot of children are suffering. And the public housing...
And from... I've been watching the Market House discussions thing, but I wanted to speak about this part of the thing. The sheriff of the county, either last week or the week before, wrote a really nice article in the Capitol that I think every citizen should be aware of. It was about a bill that was up in the county to allow proptarian tow trucks. And he brought up a lot of really good points in this article. As tow trucks are representing the community as a whole, but the police department specifically. If you had your car towed, you'd assume it couldn't be safe. If the police were there, it took it away. And it'd be a lot of... Certain bill that would allow proptering. So I wanted to kind of make that same point, good part of the community. If a citizen... I've heard people from around the country coming here and then writing letters to the city upset about the parking tickets that they got. And I know that because I was on the parking ticket, but it vibrated a very long way. And so if anybody started putting up a parking meter around their business, that could have a really bad, weird, bad taste in people's mouths that I think should be decided by a community. It should have the police or cadets giving the tickets, not just anybody willing to own them. So I just wanted to leave that point for something to pin about. These tickets will be representing the whole city so it would be a lot of privatization of people's lives. It could have a bad... Thank you.
My name is Jessica Hackler, and it's 56th President Street. And I'm also here for the Market House. But first of all, I want to say that anyone who wants to be very interested in on that data, we dropped here and found it around. But I also wanted to follow up on Mr. Brooks' day. That video was very great, but I also recognize the lack of color and the lack of youth that were in that video. And it is... As many of you know, I've been working very hard and very proud of the fact that the Annapolis Rec Department finally opened after nine years after getting a grant to Eastport Playground. And thank you for everyone in the council who worked with that and who helped with that. But the fact that it took nine years to get a playground at Eastport to be done. The fact that Eastport Elementary no longer has an after-school program that is normally run through the Rec Department because the Rec Department didn't feel that they had the funding to fund that. The fact...
Oh, there you go. The fact that the Rec Department took away the after-school program at Eastport Elementary that directly affects those children in Newtown 20, those children in Woodside Garden, all children in the Eastport Catchman area, and allows them to have activities at school, after school, rather than just going home and sitting and becoming prey for the forces that are at work in the communities. That was taken away by the Rec Department. And I can say that as a mom of four children, the number of children's programs that have been offered at the Rec Department in the last 10 years that I've been a mom has drastically decreased. When my older children were younger, we used to go and be able to do, without a membership, low-cost programs that represent... That were attended by children of all socioeconomic classes and all colors. Those programs are gone. We have no more of those early education programs at the Rec Center. They were fantastic. They were incredibly inexpensive, and they were really important for a lot of people. Those are all gone. We need more of these things. We need them at the Rec Center. We need them throughout the city for those children who don't have access to transportation. Mr. Brooks is exactly right. It's wonderful that we have the pickleball players and the gym users to support the Rec Center. But it should be supporting it, and the city should be supporting it for those children and those community members who really, really need it and can't afford it. Thank you.
Alderwoman Pindell Charles?
Ms. Packler? I want to address your comments as well as Mr. Rau's. And I'm sorry, Mr. Rau, I apologize. I had to go down to take care of something else while you were speaking, but I kind of got the gist of what you were saying. Part of the impetus behind this video, and I don't know if I'm being politically correct or incorrect, is the constant rumor that the Rec Center will be privatized or that we will have no public recreation and Parks Department. In order to somewhat, like Mr. Trader said, provide social marketing, we are... Part of having this video was to generate this kind of conversation. Now, Mr. Trader indicated on the video that this is Part 1 and Part 2. There's no reason that Mr. Trader can't do Part 3 and Part 4, which would be interviewing the youth or interviewing folks like you with the kind of comments that you have. But this video has now become a catalyst for what could be. So we're glad that you came out and said what you said. Like I said, indicate to Mr. Trader what you would like to see in Parts 3 and 4. Like I said, indicate to Mr. Trader what you would like to see in parts three and four, because no one says that we can't have a part three and four. But this is just what we want to hear. This video has generated this kind of conversation and that's really what it's all about. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. I'm Connie Del Signoor and as you know, I'm the president and CEO of Visit Annapolis in Anarundel County. I want to speak about the market house tonight. However, my board of directors does not take positions in cases like this, so I'm just going to speak as a marketer.
If we could, real quick, the market house hearing is actually after this. We like to keep all of our public hearings together.
Oh.
So if you could wait, there's a long sign-up sheet of people to speak on the market house.
Okay, and I am on that sheet, sorry. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address this council?
My name is Craig Martin, I'm an architect here in town. And I actually, I don't have anything prepared, I wasn't necessarily going to speak about this until I heard a mention about the parking. And there's been something with S&amp;P, I guess SP Plus. I don't really clearly understand how the process works. And I don't think necessarily the people at S&amp;P Plus understand how the process works. Sometimes I will call them for clarification about when lots are open or what prices are for different parking violations, and it seems there's confusion. So I'm wondering if as a collective body, if there could be more clarity. The lot that's behind our building is the Larkin Lot at the end of, I guess it's kind of the top of Water Street and City Gate Lane. And all of a sudden, it became a 24-hour lot where there was charging that was happening overnight. I called SP Plus, they were not aware, they weren't exactly sure what happened, they couldn't explain to me exactly how charges were working. And it seems like this is a city issue, it's not a private issue. So I'm hoping that someplace there could be more clarity about when parking can occur, what the charges are. They clearly said that there had been an increase in the charges for people parking in residential districts, so I guess I'm just asking for more clarity. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yeah. We'll make sure someone from my office follows up with you before you leave.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Seeing no motion, I declare comments by the general public closed. Madam City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is an update from the mayor.
All right, we've had a busy month and I'd like to give you an update on what's been going on. We had a milestone in our community, Grumps Cafe was our 15-year anniversary, so the comptroller joined me down there along with some other elected officials to celebrate that. We also had the Turner Park Playground reopening, so on June the 30th, we opened the gates, there's a brand-new playground and equipment for the Eastport community. It was provided by a grant to the Department of Natural Resources and the total cost was about $57,000. So we're glad to have that equipment updated, it's one of the most-used parks in the city of Annapolis. I just want to take a moment, real quick, to thank everybody from the Annapolis Harbor Masters Office. Many of you may have read about the capsized boat, the bull that went over this past weekend. And anytime a boat flips over, it's very dangerous. And our police boat, our fire boat, they were there right away along with the Harbor Masters Office, so I want to thank all of them. They're usually unsung heroes, they don't get a shout-out all the time, so I want to thank them for all their hard work. Also want to remind everyone about the ISO rating we mentioned at the last city council meeting. Our fire department is now one of only two fire departments in the entire state of Maryland to have this rating of Class 1. It's on a scale from 1 to 10. Put in perspective, there's 157 cities, Annapolis and Baltimore are the only two that have a Class 1 rating. So what that means for everyone is there's a possibility your homeowner's insurance and renter's insurance could be lowered from this upgrade rating. So I want to thank the union, the police chief, and everybody else who was there. Another reminder about getting information out, the circulator is now free, we encourage everyone to use it. And if you're wondering when it comes, you can find it on an app. It's RLS Shuttle, you can buy it on iTunes and the App Store. And lastly, I do my open door session every single month. We had to reschedule because this, the first Tuesday of the month was 4th of July, so open door will be scheduled for July the 18th. You can come by between 9:30 and 3:00 PM. We don't take reservations in advance, you can just walk in and get a meeting with me for 10 minutes. And that concludes my update from the mayor.
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is approval of the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar include journals of proceedings for both regular meeting minutes and special meeting minutes. First readers include O-3617 Wheel Immobilization Devices, O-3717 Parking Places and Parking Lots, R-2317 Wheel Immobilization Devices Fines, R-2417 Parking Places and Parking Lots Fees. On second reader, there is O-2917 Double Parking.
Is there any objection to the consent calendar? Seeing none, entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar?
No.
Any discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Is another one on it? Does she, does she say?
Mayor Panalitis?
Aye.
Alderman Pindell Charles?
Aye.
Alderman Flayson?
Aye.
Alderman Litman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
Alderman Pfeifer?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Alderman Flayson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Was that included in the consent calendar? I didn't hear of that. Thank you.
Madam City Attorney?
All right, the next item on the agenda is business and miscellaneous items, beginning with GT 1117 Transfer From Repair Wellhead Number 5 To Treatment Plant Upgrade.
Is there a motion to approve GT 1117?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Madam City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, the next item is GT 1417 Transfer From Stormwater Management retrofit and Market House To Buy Water Park.
Is there a motion to approve GT 1417?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Madam City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is GT 1517 Transfer From MIT Salaries FY17 To Recreation Software CIP.
Is there a motion to approve GT 1517?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Madam City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is GT 1617 Transfer From Salaries To Accounting Services.
Is there a motion to approve GT 1617?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Madam City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is GA 3217, which was at it, grant titled "The Janice Holman Grant Program For Land Trust" from the Maryland Environmental Trust.
Is there a motion to approve GA 3217?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Madam City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is public hearings, beginning with Resolution R-2217 United Nations Paris Climate Agreement.
The first three people signed up to speak, Lisa Craig, Connie Del Signoor, and Rob Savage. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, Lisa Craig, 1836 Shore Drive, Edgewater, Maryland. Tonight, I'm actually speaking as Chair of the Climate Change and Heritage Committee for the United States National Committee of the International Council on Monuments and Sites, in support of Resolution 2217 United Nations Paris Climate Agreement. My thanks to the entire city council for moving forward Resolution 2217 and particularly to the co-sponsors Alderman Litman, Pfeifer, and Arnett. Paris Agreement's central aim is to strengthen the global response to the threat of climate change by keeping a global temperature rise this century well below 2 degrees Celsius and to pursue efforts to limit the temperature increase even further to 1.5 degrees Celsius. The 153 nations signed on to the goals of the Paris Agreement are collaborating to provide the necessary financial flows, new technology, and enhanced capacity-building support not only their national objectives, but to assist vulnerable developing countries. In Annapolis, public management decisions for protecting cultural resources from the threats of climate change are taking shape through the Weather Together Initiative, which follows the Paris Agreement and National Park Service protocols of integrating diverse sources of information, prioritizing actions according to vulnerability and significance of the resource, engaging a broad array of stakeholders, and recognizing the potential for loss. According to studies issued by the President's Advisory Council on Historic Preservation, building reuse typically offers greater environmental savings than demolition and new construction. The study data is clear, it can take between 10 to 80 years for a new, energy-efficient building to recapture the climate change impacts created by its construction. Building reuse and retrofit substantially reduce climate change impacts. For example, retrofitting just 1% of office buildings and single-family homes over the next 10 years could help to meet 15% of the total CO2 reduction targets over the next decade. The National League of Cities has stated, "Local leaders are taking action on climate change because as first responders, local governments are on the front lines of delivering services and protecting citizens." Extreme weather events, which have become more frequent and more severe, have brought renewed attention to the need for cities to anticipate, prepare for, and adapt to their impacts. Extreme weather events severely impact local and regional infrastructure, economies, public safety, public health, natural landscapes, and environmental quality. As local elected officials entrusted with the stewardship of taxpayer dollars, we know that the cost of prevention pales in comparison to the cost of inaction in terms of dollars, property, and human life. As a poster child for numerous Union of Concerned Scientists reports on the impact of climate change on historic landmark communities, Annapolis has all the scientific evidence it needs to understand that climate change is occurring, is primarily man-made, threatens our environment, our historic and natural heritage, and our future prosperity. It would be irresponsible to ignore the voices of scientists, economists, environmentalists, heritage advocates, and most importantly, our own citizens by failing to act locally on this global issue. I would ask that with the passage of this resolution, the council provide additional authority to Mayor Panalitis on behalf of the Annapolis City Council to join the 347 mayors who have signed on to the climate mayor's statement in response to President Trump's withdrawal from the Paris Climate Agreement. I've attached a copy of that signed agreement for your consideration. Thank you.
Next person signed up is Connie Del Signoor.
Thank you, Ms. Craig.
I agree with everything Lisa Craig, while he says, "I am determined to speak of the law of the house," I apologize.
We'll catch you next time. After that is Rob Savage.
There are five votes already on it, so it's okay.
Thank you, and good evening. My name is Rob Savage, I live at 12 Windwest Berlin. I'm here to testify in support of this resolution because climate change is, represents a very significant threat to Annapolis. And I feel this is a good opportunity for the city to reaffirm its commitment to adapting to and reducing our contributions to, and also ensuring that we as a city will be prepared for impacts from climate change. You know, such impacts are likely to be quite significant. One, as an example, I want to go through a couple of examples. Captain Emil Petruccio, he's the Chair of, sorry if I butchered his name, but he's the Chair of the Oceanography Department with the US Naval Academy. He spoke for the Climate Stewards of Greater Annapolis a few weeks ago. And what he said was that the Naval Academy, they're actually anticipating three-foot level of sea level rise. They said that's the most likely scenario, three-foot level rise by 2100 with it going as high as six feet. And the Union of Concerned Scientists have also weighed in, and they did a study with the Naval Academy, and they said they're predicting between four and six and a half feet of sea level rise by 2100. So I think it's also worth noting that in the previous 100 years, our sea level has risen about one foot, and now we're talking about a minimum of three to four feet in the next 100 years. So one event I want to point you to as comparison is Hurricane Isabel. And that was about six feet of sea level rise, I believe. And so this is again coming from the captain from the Naval Academy saying that those levels of flooding during Hurricane Isabel by 2100, that will become as frequent as a 20-year And so even before factoring in the future sea level rise, we have an increasing problem with nuisance flooding right now. The National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration has stated that since 1957, Annapolis has experienced a 925% increase in nuisance flooding, 925% increase. So I bring these numbers up today because I feel like, I like to suggest that they be included in this resolution, because I feel like they really help to quantify exactly what the impacts are going to be and give people an idea of why this is so important for our city. I have two other suggestions I'd like to highlight in my spoken testimony. One is to use the opportunity to reaffirm our already adopted greenhouse gas reduction targets. And they were adopted, if I'm not mistaken, back in 2008. And those targets are for the government, a 50% reduction by 2012, which is passed, 75% reduction by 2025, and carbon neutrality by 2050. For the community at large, it was 25% by 2012, 50% by 2025, and carbon neutrality by 2050. So the second suggestion I'd like to highlight is that adding an item about living shorelines and wetlands towards the end of the resolution. Specifically, I'd suggest stating that the city has resolved to, quote, "Expand and protect our wetlands and living shorelines to increase our natural protection against rising sea levels." So if we fail to emphasize the protection expansion of our natural shoreline protections, we run the danger of having a scenario where we have an entirely armored shoreline. And if that happens, that will really exacerbate the impacts of sea level rise, making flooding worse, and will result in the reduction of water quality as well because of the loss of wetlands, and will result in the reduction of habitat. So I do have more comments, but I'm not going to go over them now, I include them in the written testimony. But you know, if you have any questions about any of that, I'll be around, available. But anyway, I also support what was brought up about the US Mayoral Agreement. I think that's a great, a great thing to support as well. So without, with that, I'll just thank you for the opportunity to testify.
The next three people signed up to speak this evening, Bill Foster, Doug McLaren, and Sharon. I apologize, I can't read the last name.
Murray.
What is it?
Murray.
Murray. If everyone could please write me in the future, it would be very helpful. Thank you.
My name is Bill Foster, I live at 413 Severn Avenue. I'm a 20-year resident of the city of Annapolis. I've heard some good arguments here for what climate change is doing to our, to our environment. And I'm not here to necessarily refute the fact that human activity has caused a lot of that. My concern is that we're tying the proposal of the resolution to the Paris Climate Accord. And I've issued documents that I'm going to be covering tonight to each of the council members and with their understanding, I would like to read the letter that they have, and I hope that there are those in the audience that feel likewise that are kindred spirits. We do know that tonight we're talking about the resolution of the Nation's Paris Climate Agreement. And I'm not an expert in the field of global warming, but I'm aware of the arguments posited by self-proclaimed experts on both sides of the issue. And I'm And I'm not persuaded that the causes of global warming have been creditably defined to qualify as the basis for any such resolution. And I note in here where it is in the document itself, the resolution, for reference. Those in the audience will not have that, but there are references in there in several cases, probably six or seven, that refer to the Paris Climate Accord. Until this question is resolved with greater certainty, it's irresponsible for any government or subdivision thereof to officially support such a claim. Of course, the sponsors' reference to Paris Climate Accord may only have been included to broaden the appeal of the proposed resolution, but if adopted as drafted, Annapolis would align its own responsibility for environmental preservation with this understanding among nations that was created not as a treaty but through executive fiat while disenfranchising many of its citizens by turning a deaf ear to their voices for restraint. The Paris Accord is a matter of national and international protocols for which we elect and appoint national officials to debate, develop policy, and negotiate treaties. There are no accompanying enforcement provisions as with the predecessor, the Kyoto Agreement, in which the U.S. also declined to participate. In this respect, each party to the Paris Accord pledges to meet certain goals without fear of being called out for felt, for falling short. A brief summary of the accord is attached for your review. That's for each of the members of the committee. It states that, quote, "President Obama committed his successor and the U.S. to a burdensome deal while enabling other foreign countries, notably China, Russia, and India, to increase their level of carbon emissions for a number of years." The author also suggested that our national leaders should seek to reengage by way of a treaty that is more in line with current realities, coupled with an approach where the burden of compliance is shared more equally among all participants. Hopefully in time, alternatives will be thoughtfully considered by our nation's elected leaders. Absent this more formal agreement among nations, it appears that Annapolis could be premature in aligning itself with the present accord. Most citizens of Annapolis appreciate the need to support responsible stewardship of our natural resources. This raises the question, why is this simple reality being drawn out in three pages and 18 wheresses if not to gain the broadest possible support? The visual appeal of its text is like a moth drawn to fire or a Trojan horse which masks unforeseen consequences. It purports to adopt the terms of an ill-conceived and unenforceable memorandum which the country itself has chosen not to follow. If or when it passed, this shifting sand will become the foundation upon which local codes and intrusive practices will be based upon and enforced, including, among others noted in the document itself, quote, "the integration of climate change and natural hazards planning into all city plans and capital improvement processes." To summarize the above comments in the local vernacular, if Resolution 2217 is approved by the city, by the city council, the cap will be out of the bag. Thank you.
My name is Sharon Murray. I live at 717 Bay Ridge, and sorry about my penmanship, but I left my glasses at home. But I really urge you, Mayor, to join the 347 U.S. Climate Mayors who have committed to honor and uphold the Paris Climate Agreement goals. They represent 65 million Americans. Please join L.A., Boston, New York City, Houston, Chicago, Philly, Baltimore, D.C. The federal government won't act. We need to act locally. We need to strengthen our efforts to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and to support the global, global policy. Thank you.
My name is Ted Weber. I live at 1022 Park Avenue in Annapolis. I'm an environmental scientist by profession and a member of the Annapolis Environmental Commission. I believe our chair is here. Okay, so she's going to speak on behalf of the commission, but I'm going to speak on behalf of myself. So I'm here to testify in support of Resolution 2217. I'd just like to mention briefly that 97% of climate scientists and all major scientific organizations agree that climate change is occurring and primarily the result of human activities. The science is, is more settled than most scientific questions, more so than smoking cigarettes causing cancer was, and that's pretty settled. In response, well, first of all, I'd like to applaud the city council for drafting this resolution, and I hope you will adopt it and join hundreds of other American cities in recognizing the emergency, the profound emergency that we state. And we don't need to cite statistics. All we have to do is go out and see the flooding that's increasing every year and the danger that we face from storm surge, and we all know that. The city is already taking steps to do that, to address this. And I'd like to point out in response to one of the other speakers that the resolution specifically supports the principles of the Paris Agreement as they apply in the city of Annapolis. It's not trying to address world issues. What we are trying to do is to recognize that the global average temperature is increasing and that we want to do whatever the city can to do its part to hold that temperature increase down to below 2%, below pre-industrial levels, preferably to less than 1.5 degrees Celsius below those levels. And so I do have a few suggestions. Set that aside, so I applaud you for that. I have a few suggestions for improvements. One, that the city should reaffirm, and I think that Rob Savage mentioned this, to reaffirm meeting the 2025 and 2050 goals of the Sustainable Annapolis Community Action Plan, reducing emissions 50% by 2012, or 25% by 2012, and 75% by 2025, and achieving carbon neutrality by 2050 for city government, and so forth. I'd also like to see the city add language urging the Baltimore Regional Cooperative Purchasing Committee to phase out the purchase of coal-generated electricity as quickly as possible and replace it with clean renewable energy. Because at present, the purchasing committee and the city are not only contributing to global warming by purchasing primarily coal energy, but we're contributing to the destruction of mountains and streams and appellations because that's where BGE gets its coal from. The city has a voice in Brick Pack, just as we have a voice in a sort of a, you know, we, the committee tells us things, the state tells us things, and we can have our voice felt back. It's a two-way street. So I urgently use that, use our voice. And let's see. Sorry, I'm a little, my notes are a little disorganized here. The last two things are, that I recommend that we add are that the city will, whatever practical, replace its automotive and truck fleets with electric or hybrid equivalents. And, and then on page three of the resolution, lines 31 and 32, it's commendable to integrate solar into new development projects, but you might consider striking the battery backup requirement and adding geothermal instead, and there is an option. So that's just a technical requirement, and I would be happy to work with the EMC on these sort of technical issues.
That's perfect timing. Alderman Arnett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Weber. I noticed you going through papers. Are you going to submit some comments to the Environmental Matters Committee? That would be helpful.
I will. I went to the, I attended the previous committee meeting, and some of these notes are from that, and I was frankly scribbling through them during the meeting, and that's why they're so disorganized.
All right. Thank you. That would be helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anybody else who would like to speak on this subject, now's your opportunity.
Hi. My name is Jacob Wilkerson. I live at 426 Burnside in Eastport. I've lived in Annapolis my entire life, and if I know anything, it's that Annapolis is a city that prides itself on our history. We are proud to have been the first capital of the United States and currently be the capital of the great state of Maryland. But if we are so proud of our history, then we must care about it, and if we truly care about our history, then we have to preserve it. As a coastal city, we are on the front line of the fight against climate change. We cannot allow ourselves to just stand by as our city literally is overtaken by the rising sea levels. By withdrawing from the United Nations Paris Climate Agreement, the president has made a choice that we will all pay for unless we do something. We must cast aside party lines and work together to fight what can only be considered a universal threat to us all. It doesn't matter if you're Republican, a Democrat, those words barely mean anything right now. We all have to live here. At the very least, it's our responsibility as human beings to leave the earth a better place for the future generations that have no choice but to follow in our footsteps. If we truly value our history here in Annapolis, then we must value the city itself. And if Washington won't help us protect what we value, then we must help ourselves. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nicole Young. I live at 234 Chatham Lane, and I am a fairly new Annapolis resident. I've only been here for a year and a half. This is my first city council meeting, so thank you for making this open to the public. I do support this resolution, and I would like to add that I would like to see Annapolis go even further towards carbon neutrality and asking the federal government and the state government to put a price on carbon emissions. I am a local leader of the Citizens Climate Lobby Annapolis Chapter, and we are asking the federal government to price carbon emissions so that we can go even faster towards carbon neutrality, mitigation of climate change, and also promoting the economy while supporting households through this transition. Because we know it will be difficult for households if the cost of energy goes up when we transition to all renewable energy. We want all households to be able to make it through that transition without taking a hit. So I would ask you to take a look at the Citizens Climate Lobby proposal and potentially including in the resolution or another resolution, asking the state to take a look at this type of policy as well. I also would like to recommend a book for the mayor and all of the council members. It's called Climate of Hope. It's by Michael Bloomberg and Carl Pope, How Cities, Businesses, and Citizens Can Save the Planet. Highly recommended. Just came out hot off the press. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is James Homquist. I live at 408 Second Street, and I am an environmental scientist by training, and I could go over all of those great facts and figures that other people have gone into, but I will just support that, and I will say that I am very supportive of this city council resolution. My suggestion and my proposal is actually kind of boring and technical, but very necessary. I propose that we need a plan and a protocol for tracking and reporting our citywide emissions. I know that we have had reports on our emissions in the past before, but I don't believe that they are transparent or publicly available enough. And the World Resources Institute has put out documentation outlining the steps that cities need to take to implement greenhouse gas reduction plans, and providing this annual standardized and, excuse me, this standardized annual and essentially open source reporting is one of the steps that's needed. So I recommend that, that the resolution have language supporting the Global Protocol for Community-Scale Greenhouse Gas Inventory Emissions, the GCP. I would like that language in there, and I would, I would like that standard adopted. Thank you.
Sir, sir, real quick, get back to the microphone. You have a question, but before we get to Alderman, Littman, just want to say thank you for coming by, and if you'd like a detailed response before you leave, someone from my staff will follow up with you. Just a couple of things that are going on citywide. Number one, this body unanimously passed a contract we're signing with Honeywell. It's a $5 million contract, and it's reduced our carbon footprint. So it's retrofitting all the buildings with new lights, energy-efficient windows, and there's detailed metrics on how it reduces our carbon emission. Also, a lot of people don't know, although it's been in the paper, we're building the largest solar energy park on a closed landfill in the entire country. So what the city did, we took our closed landfill that was costing us money every year, flaring off methane gas. We leased it to a private developer, and they're going to put up 50,000 solar panels. It's going to create green jobs, green energy, make the city $5 million over the next 20 years. And so I'm happy to share that plan with you and everyone else going forward. Alderman, Littman.
Thank you. You offered some references to a few publications. Can you provide that in writing, please?
Yes, I can. I've forwarded that to Alderman, Arnett, and I can forward it to the rest of you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
My name is Diane Butler, and I'm here to speak as the chairwoman of the Annapolis Environmental Commission in support of R. 2217. We would like to thank Alderman, Littman, Pfeiffer, and Arnett for sponsoring this resolution. When the Annapolis Environmental Commission first discussed this resolution, it was clear that even though the resolution seemed largely symbolic, it was important to support. As we discussed the substance of the United Nations Paris Climate Agreement as it relates to our city, we remembered that our city has already set some very important environmental goals in our sustainability plan, which was incorporated into the city's 2009 comprehensive plan. Since our sustainability plan is incorporated into our comprehensive plan, it has the force of law. Many thanks to you for your efforts thus far in trying to meet our sustainability goals, and the mayor just outlined some of the great efforts and things that we have been doing in the city, so congratulations. We hope that you will continue to take our environmental goals seriously and to maintain, to maintain our quality of life in the city of Annapolis. Individual cities' actions do make a difference. We urge you to pass Resolution R. 2217, and thank you for your attention.
Is there anyone else? Seeing no motion, I declare the public hearing on R. 2217 closed. Madam City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is ID 25717, which is related to the RFP 17-21, lease of the Annapolis Market House at City Dock.
We have a lot of people signed up to speak this evening, so I'm going to ask everyone to keep it to the five minutes. Once you hear the tone, I'll ask you to summarize. Let me just say how we got here. There were 16 people that submitted requests for information on it. Only 16. Only four of them actually provided technical proposals, and those are the four the council will be addressing. So the first three people signed up to speak, Michael Bouchard, Joe Lyon, and Doug McLean. And if you could all state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi. I'm Michelle Bouchard. I live at eighteen Bryce Road. That's in Pandanus Mounds, not in the city, but it's just outside the city. Can you not hear? I have to keep pushing. So thank you for having us here tonight to discuss the beginnings of the Market House. I know this isn't a proposal night, but I did want to take the opportunity to introduce myself as one of the partners in the New Market proposal. My other partners will also get up and have a, is it still not on? Okay, thanks. My other partners will get up and introduce themselves. I just want to give you a quick background. I've moved here twenty-five years ago. I've lived here, fell in love with it, back moving from Boston. It was very similar to where I came from, on the water, fell in love with the downtown area, been here for twenty-five years, and have things go up and down, and I'm a little disappointed in some of what's gone on, and I feel like a New Market House would really bring a vibrant new look to the city and a new face to the city. My background is I've been working for the last ten years at Tasting's Gourmet Market. My part in this proposal is to bring a healthy aspect to the marketplace. I'd like to see some fresh food be brought in, some sandwiches, some salads, some cheese, charcuterie. We're looking to have an open market with a retail shop and fresh produce, open windows, and we'd like to bring picnic bath tickets out to the boats. We'd like to get a delivery service in, and we really would like the opportunity to make a difference and maintain it. My partners and I would be onsite. It would be one cohesive unit where we would be working there day in and day out, where we would be monitoring this and making sure it was clean and orderly and maintained, and we're very excited to see a change in the Market House. Thank you for letting me introduce myself.
Are Joe Lyon and Doug McLean here?
Good evening. My name is Doug McLean. I live at sixty-six Franklin Street, Acton's Landing, and my family has been associated with the Annapolis area for the better part of a hundred years. And as a child, I can remember very fondly how the Market Center was really an integral part of downtown. It was where you would see your neighbors on weekends, and it was a place to get fresh fruits and vegetables and seafood and all the things that come into the city center. And I've had a chance to review all of the proposals for the Market House and strongly endorse the Gavin Buckley proposal for the New Market. That's what I had to say.
The next three people signed up to speak are Pat Zino, William Pratt, and Brian Rigby.
My name is Pat Zino. My husband and I live at fifty-seven Cornhill Street. We've lived in the historic district for about twenty-four years. I'm here tonight to comment on the applications for the Market House. First, I want to thank our Alderman, Joe Budge, for enacting legislation to make this a more transparent process. I carefully read the four proposals. We are living so close to downtown or in downtown and so close to the Market House, we're very concerned about the Market House and want it to be far better than it is. And when I read the four proposals, I was a little surprised that the proposal from Gioletti's was so brief. Then I realized the other three proposals describe each of the applicant's visions for the Market House, visions that might be good, visions that might be bad. They might sound terrific on paper, but when put into practice, maybe not. And then we would be back to square one, squabbling about the Market House. Gioletti's proposal is different. Mary Gioletti proposes to duplicate with some additions her current business, Gioletti's Delicatessen, a successful locally-owned, twenty-five-year-old business in parole. She tells us that her vision for the Market House is the same as what has made Gioletti's a success, provide quality food, service, and value to her clients, specifically food that is fresh and made on the premises for in-house dining or takeout, along with a full-service deli that includes specialty meats and cheeses, fresh baked breads, packaged prepared foods to go, grocery items, and beer and wine. In her proposal, she is not giving us a vision, she is describing a reality. And although she doesn't say this, I will. Gioletti's doesn't have to strive to be a marketplace for the locals, it already is. After all, it's in parole. As for tourists, what's the first thing you ask when you're looking for someplace to eat or shop in other towns? Not where do the tourists go, but where do the locals go? We've been customers of Gioletti's for years. We will go in to get a quick bowl of soup, salad, or sandwich, but end up staying longer than planned because the atmosphere, while not trendy or fancy, is pleasant. While there, we might have an espresso and pick up a loaf of fresh bread, prepared food to take home, canned goods that we can't find elsewhere, pasta, or a bottle of Italian wine. The food is always fresh and delicious, the service friendly and helpful, and the surroundings impeccably clean. When Whole Foods in the wine store opened across the street, we wondered how Gioletti's would respond to the competition. Gioletti's remained true to itself but became even better, expanding the hours, adding wider variety of foods, all the while keeping high-quality standards. Isn't all of this exactly what you would have described in your vision of the Market House? I know as a local, I would be thrilled and proud to have Gioletti's take over our Market House. Thank you.
Before we get to the next speaker, the city manager passed me a note just now. Apparently, at three PM this afternoon, Gioletti's had actually pulled out of the proposal, so there's down to three.
Well, I guess I'll close up early then. Good evening. My name is Brian Rigby. I'm at one twenty-six Academy Street. I'm an architect by training, but I specialize as the Director of Design for a boutique consulting firm that specializes in membership-based nonprofits, especially recreation and community centers. But I'm very excited to be here. I didn't know we were going to talk about the Pitt-Moyer Center, and I'm sure that's a conversation for another day, but at the end of the day, you know, I'm thankful to have the opportunity to be here and have input. We say in the nonprofit world, people drive programs and programs drive place, right? So the old adage of if you build it, they will come, isn't really true, right? If you build what they want, they will come. And I think that when you look at anything from the Market House to Pitt-Moyer, you really have to look at what people want. And if we want another t-shirt shop or we want another chain restaurant, you know, you can get that at parole. You can get that in a town center. You can get ample parking, highway access, and chain stores as far as the eye can see. But if you want something unique, if you want something that's in the heart of a historic seaport downtown, then we've got to do something different. And I've lived here for six years. I've probably been, if you add that up to how many parades I've been, it's probably like eighty parades, because Annapolis loves to get together and party. And it's unfortunate, the only place we have to do that is actually a strip of concrete along City Dock and a park at the end that, you know, doesn't have a lick of grass in there. What we do have is we have a historic Market House that's in the middle of downtown, and if we do this the right way, it will be the urban living room that we all deserve. And when we talk about being able to use these spaces, you know, it's not so much about what the vendors are, it's who really, who is this in the hand of? And at the end of the day, it's a building in a great location with good bones, but if we don't program it the right way, if we don't have things that get people involved, experiential gatherings, then it's just going to be another vendor in downtown. And after reviewing the now three proposals, I think that the New Market team has a proven track record of what they've done with gatherings and events on West Street, and I think we need to bring that down to City Dock. Thank you.
My name is William Pratt. I live at thirty-two Juliana Circle East, Annapolis, Maryland. I'd also like to speak on the behalf of the Market House in reference to the lack of diversity in the market and also being an employee at a young teenage age of sixteen, working for Mature and Poultry back in the early eighties, when we had, when we had a unique nucleus of Annapolis, where residents from Annapolis of all walks of life came, and it was a uniqueness that brought together people of all walks of life. And what was really interesting to me is you could go there and receive things from fancy fruits and vegetables, to cheese pizza, to hamburgers, to raw bar, fresh oysters, fresh seafood. And I say that, all of that, to say is everybody in life in these days we're living in now can't afford the prices of downtown Annapolis. We have families that I would see coming to the Market House, low-income families that would bring their families in and would be able to bring their family in that couldn't afford the McGarvys, that couldn't afford the Middleton Taverns, and could bring their family in and enjoy, and enjoy the festivities of downtown Annapolis and the waterworks, where we had local watermen coming in and dining with us. I'd like to see the Market House go back to some of the days of the early eighties of what it used to be like, where people loved each other, people shared things of likeness, and I support Gavin Buckley coming to downtown city of Annapolis. He's proven leadership in Annapolis on his West Street, and I support Gavin Buckley. Thank you.
The next three people are William Rao, Judy Jones, and Larry Harding.
This is an anomaly, actually, but I'm going to be following William Pratt. My name is William Rao. So I also support New Market for a number of reasons. One, because there's a proven history of being inclusive, all the way from employees to what was just expressed, which is creating environments where people come together, whether it's dining under the stars or it's, you know, events at the Met. What we do need is to acknowledge what is needed right now in Annapolis, which I think, I don't want to use this expression because it sounds like animal cruelty, but beating a dead horse. But again, I'm going to hammer it home anyway, like a broken record. We are at a crossroads in this city, I believe, and this is incredibly personal, of course, between moving into hyper gentrification, where only certain people can afford to live in this city and enjoy the wonderful things, even environmentally, that you talked about in this city, where it's an entitlement that people have that can only live here when they have legacy money, which is, you know, Martha's Vineyard, Hampton's, Nantucket, and we don't necessarily need that here. What I would, as a proposal, is recommend that the process that you use to determine who is given the opportunity to utilize that space, that they have somewhat of an equitable approach to it, whether it's an equity study, something that looks at how they can, like other cities, like Detroit and, you know, other municipal areas that have incorporated, looking at the current environment and how building something new impacts that current environment. Does that make sense? So that we're not moving into something and saying, well, this is for the future people, and this is for the people who will buy the house right on the water, but to consider what's here. So that's one of my proposals. And within that is, and I don't know if this is going to be considered, but it's something, again, to consider, which is an opportunity to hire local people, to hire millennials, to hire people that are somewhat classified as minorities, and to hire people that would not ordinarily work in environments like downtown. And I say that because everyone's either working out at the mall or working somewhere else. What we want to do is have more people working and living in Annapolis. And something that's inclusive. So we said all of that, and I'll say the only reason why, beyond the fact that I do support what Gavin has done in this particular proposal, but the deeper reason why that may not be brought up is the history of that particular market and the history of that space. And Anapolitans are extremely proud of their buildings and of their history and of their history tours and of George Washington walking the cobblestone streets and of yada, 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 but we never talk about who built those buildings. And on whose backs and blood, sweat, and toil, those buildings stand in the shadows of, and they stand in direct shadow where slaves were brought into this country and that built all of this stuff that we're standing in right now. And again, it upsets the entitled kind of feel that even to an extent, some African-Americans in Annapolis have themselves. They forget the exact same thing. But it's important, the decision that you make about a space like this, because you can either further alienate people who understand and live a different type of history that this city represents. Does that make sense? So as you move into the decision-making process, just remember the history and remember to be both equitable, also be conscientious of whatever designs and what's in place, so that when I show back up or I take my children back to that place, it's not somewhere, it isn't further putting stucco and a facade on what the history actually is. So maybe something along with it that incorporates not just Kuntukente Landing, but kind of the role that people of color played in building all the other spaces. Thank you.
Alderwoman Pindell Charles?
Mr. Rao? Mr. Rao, can you come back up, please? I have a question. What you're saying makes a lot of sense. How do we hold that person or those persons accountable?
That's actually probably the easiest part. And the reason why I say that is because it doesn't have to be legally binding, but what you can create is, and I can even, just like with the recommendations, I can even kick you a draft if you want of, for small feelings, yeah. It's more like of a nuanced framework that says, or an approach that says, anyone who attempts to build something on this historic- attempts to build something on this historic site that has a history, which I don't know if many people know, do you all know the history of that specific area? They're like, please don't say it, we hear it. It's, you know, Middleton's Tavern, whatever else, what was the other one? Near, they're literally where they sold the slaves and where they checked their teeth. And for the women, they inspected their cavities and whatever else to see if they were, you know, they could bear children and all those other things, which we can forget about. But when they brought them in, they came through the market. Okay? So for someone like myself, that when I go there, that's always a reminder of that. And if you ever ask yourself a report, so what you can do is you can create a report that basically doesn't necessarily legally bind them, but it's things that you want in consideration of building in that space. And that includes something that allows them, allows whoever receives this for no extra money or maybe a little more time, but to do, to be observant of those things and not just build something for money and for profit and then forget about what was really there because, you know, it's a real thing.
I'd like to see something in writing from you.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Judy Jones and Larry Harding.
My name is Judy Jones, and I live on Ten Fleet Street in Annapolis. And I really can't really top the previous speakers, they're talking about history. I just have some minor concerns since Gea Letty's pulled out. I don't have an awful lot to say, but I'll say what I have to say anyway. I'm really opposed, basically, to Mr. Blonder's desire to lease the Market House because I'm really worried about the whole idea of serving at his Market Bar cocktails. I live perhaps within a stone's throw of the Market House, and the whole idea of having another establishment serving cocktails is really abhorrent to me. And that's about all I have to say about that. And then I have a minor, or perhaps a major problem, Mr. Buckley's desire to be involved in the Market House. Now, if I'm wrong, please, please correct me. But since Mr. Buckley is also trying to run as a candidate for mayor, I just worry about his conflict of interest, if there is one, and I'd like him to, or them to respond to that, if there is going to be a conflict of interest, you know, if he should win the nomination and then win the election, is there a conflict of interest? That's my question. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Larry Harding. I live on Sixth Chase Road. I'm a New Market supporter. Thanks for letting me have the opportunity to speak. My wife and I, Lynn, moved into town in nineteen ninety-nine, and since that time was a short-term move in, but we never left Annapolis and have been happy residents ever since, love the town, love the people. One of the only items in that time that we noticed was the quirky curiosity, the fact that this incredibly historic, meaningful building right in the heart of downtown, as the Market House, was always a bit of sort of, I hate to say it, but a laughingstock or just a joke in terms of what people, residents, seem to think it should be and what it could be. That was just, it's always been for almost twenty years, just something that has been very curious for us to try and understand. The second item I wanted to talk about was when my wife and I were looking for a sushi place when we first moved down, we stopped by Tsunami, got to know Gavin Buckley behind the bar, awesome place, and he used to talk about his vision for the restaurant itself, but also the wider West Street organization. And we were struck by it. It was incredibly interesting, exciting, but it didn't exist. But then, lo and behold, over the years and decades since, it actually has come to fruition, which is an amazing testament, really, to the individual and the folks he has tended to work with and the support the community has given him. I've made a career out of working with successful entrepreneurs, and the common thread between, behind a successful entrepreneur is not just the vision, but especially where there's a track record of achieving that vision and achieving success. It's a rarity. There's a lot of people who can sit in front of a whiteboard and tell you what they think the world's going to be like. It's a much shorter list of folks who can actually go out and do it, and probably as much as anybody who all of us would know, Gavin Buckley and the folks he's chosen to work with over the years has actually done it. The fact that he wants to potentially be involved in Market House here, I view it as almost a blessing for the residents of Annapolis to sort of line up with a successful visionary entrepreneur with a track record of success and building up a team of people who can help him execute that. It's not something that happens every day. I've seen it time and again, you get an entrepreneur with the passion and the drive, they will not fail. If they've done it before and they haven't failed, it's not going to fail again. That's just, it's in their DNA. They don't work with people who don't sort of share that vision, and they get that vision executed. You know, from hearing, reading the proposal, hearing Gavin speak about it since his team, I know Michelle Bouchard very well, these folks are going to execute it and completely, to a hundred and eighty degrees, turn around something that has been, you know, less than stellar for us in the community into something that I think could be right at the very top. So personally, as a resident here, I couldn't be more excited. Thanks again to the folks for letting me speak, and have a good evening.
The next three people we have this evening are Joe Lyon, Gavin Buckley, and Jessica Pakler.
My name is Jessica Pakler, and I'm a resident of Eastport, five oh six President Street. And I am here to support New Market. My history, I, as many of you know, I've been in Eastport and Annapolis since nineteen ninety-eight. My husband and I moved here, we were in the restaurant business when we moved here, and we have remained in some form of restaurant business, event planning, food service, and marketing. I have remained in some sort of form in, over those last eighteen years that we've been in Annapolis. It's what I've done pretty much my entire life. I've been an event planner all over the world and worked in restaurants, and I've worked in restaurants here. And more importantly, I love restaurants. I'm a, I love food. When we travel, we travel based on restaurants. We make diversions to eat in different places. We look for what is the most local, the most desirable of a city or a town, no matter where we are, no, it's a big town or small town, and we go there. And like many people have said today, what has always shocked me and surprised me is how little of that you can find in downtown Annapolis. There is such a focus on the tourists right now in downtown Annapolis. And when you look at successful cities, they are cities who have taken their focus and put them on the residents, because where the residents want to go, the tourists will go. We don't need a seven-eleven in the Market House, we don't need another tourist spot. When you look at the New Market proposal, you look at, it's not just Gavin, it is Gavin and Jody and Joe and the whole team of incredible people who have put together restaurants and businesses all over that have been successful. They are Annapolis residents, they are supportive of Annapolis. I mean, you look at what they have done for West Street, and again, Gavin and Jody, there have been the vision behind it, but it's the team that they put together. And when you look at what West Street has become over the years that they've been involved and the changes that have done, when you're an Annapolis resident and you have a visitor coming into town, more often than not, you take them to West Street, not to Main Street, because West Street is where locals go, West Street is where the residents go. Of course, I'm also partial to Eastport, I'm not going to say anything, but when I'm talking about, over the bridge, I'm talking on this side of the bridge. But they have a vision. And what's important in the restaurant business is that there are ups and downs in the restaurant business. The mood of the customers change, and you can see that with what they've done. There have been ups and downs, and they've been resolute, they've been determined to achieve success in all of those restaurants. Tsunami has changed in, over the years, and it's taken on new things and taken away old things, and it's remained successful. The building where Metropolitan is, same thing, it's been a few different things, but it's remained, it's become successful, it's remained successful. It's a place where people of all color go, it's a place where people of, you know, all of the different places where different socioeconomic levels can go. And more importantly, what they've done to the whole feeling of West Street is what, in a very small microcosm, we all need to see in the Market House. We need to see a Market House that draws in the residents, and then the tourists will follow. But more importantly, we need to see a place where the residents want to go. One of the things I love the most about their vision are the tables in the front, where you can buy food from the Market House, or you can bring it from the New Market, or you can bring in your own food. So you don't have to, you're not limited to just what they're serving there. You can bring in food from any of the other places downtown that serve takeout, you can even bring a picnic, and you're not limited to that. That's what we need in downtown Annapolis. We need a place where everyone feels welcome. For anyone who was downtown after the Fourth of July parade, if you managed to stick out after the rainstorms, it was, it was one of the greatest things to see because there were people, there was, it looked like Annapolis actually looks, not like what downtown normally looks like. It looks like Annapolis with black people, white people, Hispanic people, Asian, there were, everybody was down there. There were poor people, there were rich people. We were all slightly bedraggled, but we were all walking around, and that's what Annapolis downtown, the City Dock area, needs to look like, and that's what the New Market will do for Annapolis. So please support the New Market, bring what Annapolis needs, bring a real center to our city. Thank you.
Brian always makes fun of Brian when I'm watching him on TV because he gets dry-mouthed, and now I'm feeling like that a little bit. First of all, I want to thank the whole city council for your efforts on the climate stuff. I mean, I think, you know, I don't know what the mechanics of it are, but the optics are great, and I think it sends a great statement for us, our town, so thank you. My kids, thank you, thank you. So Austin, Boulder, Charleston, Burlington, Asheville, these are some of the towns in this country that have great markets, and every great city has a great market, and we have a lot of missed opportunity with our Market House. So in a time when I've got a lot going on, I felt it was important to make sure that we get the Market House right. So the Market House is no golden ticket, you know, it's going to take a lot of work. We've got to reverse a lot of things to bring locals back to it, but it's worth it. So I put a team together, I can't be involved in that team, but I also can't put my life on hold just because I'm running for office in something I might have a twenty percent chance of getting. So all the things that I do, whether they're parades or festivals or chickens or Christmas lights or whatever, that stuff would just happen because I want a better town and I want a great Market House. So the people that are going to be the main people in this, the three people, Michelle, Joe, and Jody, they have a proven track record of doing things. They are not just talkers, they get things done, and we can't afford to mess the Market House up this time. And you have to believe in us. We are people that make things happen and make sure that we follow through. So, you know, my fear was that not many people would apply for this thing, and I think that that's come to fruition, right? Gea Letty's are not in the game, and I love Gea Letty's, they're awesome, you know. So I urge you to not look at these proposals and look at the track record of these people, the three people that are on this application. I'm not doing this, I don't have a greed motive. If, please, you would not do this if you had the choice to do it. I'm doing it because I want to make a difference, right? So, and I urge you also not to do what you did with the old rec center. Don't just go out for another set of bids after you've seen everybody else's bids. That wasn't transparent. Be as transparent as you can. Let everybody see what's going on. And let the Market House be the start of a true town center. I'm just going to read to you, this is the Bible for the Market House here. Gone to Market, all of you guys have seen this. Now I'm going to have to pull my glasses out because I'm a lot older now. But on the cover of this book, it says, "The Market House is an exceptional example of a people's landmark because it has always been a meeting place where all income groups communicate. Its presence inspires a sense of community and the harmonies and relationships so needed today." And this is just, this is from Claire Wright, "This is just as true today as when she wrote it." Thank you.
My name is Joe Lyon, I'm a long-term resident of Annapolis. And my wife and I moved here from Bethesda almost twenty years ago. And we moved here because we love Annapolis. We live and breathe Maryland. We think it's the greatest place to live. And we moved over here after we got married because we thought it would be a wonderful place to raise children, and we were right in that assumption. I've lived over here for twenty years, but I've driven back to DC for the last twenty years to work at a bar that I've owned. And I recently sold that bar and that building to set up shop in Annapolis because I'm tired of DC. I think Annapolis has so much more to offer. I don't care if I make more money in DC, I want to walk to work. So that said, I've become a partner in the last two weeks with the group known as New Market LLC. And I didn't have a plan to set anything up yet because I haven't closed on my building. But I was going to open another bar, but I see the Market House, and I'm like, is it the worst market? No. Is it the best? No. But it could use some help, and I think I could help. I used to work sixty hours a week up till a couple months ago, and I can still work sixty hours a week at that market. And it's not going to be all my ideas, but it'd be new and fresh ideas. And I think, you know, together as a community, we could knock it out of the park. You know, someone's going to get the lease, but I think if we got the lease, we would have sit-down meetings, see what the community wants, what the needs are. You know, we're in a tourist town, a sailing town, and you can't escape that. That's our identity, and I think that's what the Market House needs to be. I don't know what's been said here tonight, I just ran up from Harry Brown's, I've been working there a couple nights a week just to stay in the game. And, you know, I'm looking for a new challenge, and I think this is it. I've been in the food and beverage industry for thirty years. I went to school in Baltimore to become a teacher, and I went right back to food and beverage because that's what I love. I love the people, I love the excitement. It's what drives me. The ideas that have been placed before you, I'm sure they're, you know, I didn't get to hear anything, but there, a lot of them are similar, I'm sure, but I would want to sit down with the community after, you know, we fudge out the basics. But my ideas are like, get families down there and your kids buy pumpkins in October, Christmas trees in December, you know, obviously, the farmer's market thing is out there and blah, blah, blah. But, you know, I just think, you know, it needs to be changed for the better. It's not a world-class market, it's not Eastern Market in DC. No one comes here to go to it, but they should. There's history there, and that history is gone. There's not a shred of that building that says, you know, historical significance and that we are Annapolis. As a community, we are Annapolis. That should be the showcase of the downtown. And right now, it's mediocre on a good day. No one goes down there and says, "Meet me for coffee." You only get coffee there because you're there and it's convenient. So, I mean, that said, I'd like So, I mean, that, that said, I'd like to be part of the team that drives it home and makes it an amazing place. Thank you.
Jody, Jody Danic and Nick Roper.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Thanks for letting me speak. My name is Jody Danic, I live at 2981 Friends Road in Annapolis, Maryland. I am the lesser-known and a little bit younger partner of Gavin Buckley in Tsunami, Lemongrass, Metropolitan, and most recently Sailor Oyster Bar up at 196 West Street. What we've tried to do in, on West Street is, is create a street for locals and create a street that residents want to go to because we need people to come to our restaurants two or three nights a week to make a living. People can't just come once a month or for special occasions. We need an active, vibrant restaurant that turns over and, and people feel like they can eat there two or three times a week. And fortunately, most people in Annapolis feel that way, so we feel very grateful. What we'd like to do in downtown is some of the same things that we've done on West Street with a lot of people's help and a lot of work by the Arts District Board and the inner West Street community, inner West Street Association, which I'm a member of both of those organizations. We've been able to have Dining Under the Stars, First Sunday Arts Festivals, Fringe Festivals, Chocolate Festivals, as Gavin mentioned, Chickens and Sculptures on the street. We'd like to bring some of that vitality and some of that difference to downtown Annapolis. And I think somebody said it best, that the market house should be an urban living room. It should be a place that everybody in Annapolis feels like they can go to, meet a business associate to have a cup of coffee and, and go over a plan, or, you know, catch up with your neighbors downtown and, and have a little charcuterie and a glass of wine. There, there's a lot of reasons why we are where we are with the market house and there's a lot of history. And you've heard sort of that emotion and passion from a lot of people tonight. You know, where we are right now is not the fault of the present leaseholders. They've done, I mean, really, they should be commended. They've done a fabulous job at keeping it open and, and keeping people come through with what they were given. The city has spent a lot of money trying to change it and it's never been really the right plan. And, you know, like Gavin said, it's no golden ticket to try and turn this around and change it. It's, it's really, you know, I question why I'm involved, but maybe Geolites should step back in. But, you know, I, it's, we love Geolites and we love, you know, Mary and if I had known that she had been interested, we would have tried to pull her into our group. And that's what we try and do, is pull people in to the group to try and create, you know, bring together a group of people that are going to be passionate and going to be entrepreneurs about it. They, you know, all of us want to make a living, but we, we have to think of what the community wants and, and opening everything up to the water, I think is going to make a difference. And the design right now is not right. So it's not the present leaseholders' fault, they really were left with empty spaces and they had two stalls. And they said, "Hey, how am I going to make a living if I got nine empty stalls next to me?" You know, if you're in a mall and you're the only two residents, you're not going to do too well. So they fortunately did take it over and they should be commended for something, for their efforts. A lot of people are beaten up on the present leaseholders. They are successful entrepreneurs in and of themselves. They obviously are very successful. So we want to do something a little bit different. We want to change the design, we want to open it up to the public and to the water. We want to let people have a glass of wine when they have a charcuterie or, or cheese plate. Most people like a glass of wine or beer when they have oysters or crab cake. So we'd like to do some of those things and I, I know with the team that we've assembled, we won't give up, we'll make it work and it will be a community urban living room for our residents and for the locals, so. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, all you folks who've come out here and sitting up late, we all should be at home. My name is Nick Roper. We live at 513 Sixth Street. I'm proud to say that a lot of Eastport people have been testifying here tonight. Eastport's really strong. But anyway, I, I am the first Annapolis manager of the city market. I was hired by Pip Moyer in 1975. Joyce and I moved here in 1969, so that was about 48 years ago. Anyway, Pip Moyer, who was a staunch Democrat, hired old Nick Roper to run the market house because I have a strong background in commercial real estate and in commercial real estate management. I worked hand-in-hand with Sinclair Wright and Pringle Simmons to outline the format under which the market house would operate. The book that was held up, The Market House in Annapolis, written by Sinclair Wright, and she really did a magnificent job. She pulled historic Annapolis together. The concept of the market house then was to have a market house. We had a butcher, a baker, no candlestick maker, but a butcher and baker, we had a cheese guy, we had a sandwich shop, we had a deli, we had all those things in there and most of them I put in there. It was a wonderful operation. But guess what? The world has changed. We didn't have Safeway, we didn't have Giant, and we didn't have the huge population that is coming in on Annapolis. Annapolis population hasn't gotten that big, but boy, the people coming here sure have, has been huge. So really, just a straight market house isn't going to work. But one of the premises of that whole market house foundation was it would be a market. I think the charter to the city insists that it is a market. And part of that was there would be no alcoholic beverages. And I got to tell you, that is a huge, hugely important thing. No alcohol in the market house is absolutely critical. I don't know if the City Council, if the city is planning to make a profit on this operation, or if they're going to continue to subsidize it with no taxes and whatever else they're subsidizing, but I think it's either got to be a city operation or it's got to be a for-profit operation. If it's going to be for profit, then they ought to pay the equivalent of taxes. You ought to pay maintenance and repairs and utilities and you ought to pay a market rent. If you're putting a restaurant in a facility like that in a key location, the market rent is going to be pretty dang high. It's going to be $75 or $80 a square foot plus expenses. So you're talking about a net operating expense of about $100 a square foot. That's a lot of money. I don't think that location would support it, maybe it would, I don't know. Some wonderful ideas here. I'm very impressed with some of these presentations. I think Mr. Buckley has demonstrated the steamroller machine. Man, he's got it going, he's got everybody lined up and he really has done a good presentation, a lot of good ideas. I think what the city should do is stop and pause and put together a blue ribbon commission of four, five, six people, whatever it is, of professionals to sit down and analyze what should be done and coming, come back with a, an intelligent, real estate-oriented, citizen-oriented market plan and then go out and look for proposals that meet that objective. I don't think we have an objective right now. And I would, my admonishment to the City Council is that this thing has again, after 45 years, has again allowed to become a political football. And I think that is a tragedy. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Mr. Roper was the last person signed up to speak this evening. If there's anyone else, please come forward, now's your opportunity. Please come forward.
The gentleman before me was a hard act to follow. I just, that's just wonderful testimony. I'm not here tonight to, let me, I'm Larry Clausen. I live at 160 Prince George Street. And I'm a candidate for alderman for Ward One. I have a number of points to make and I'm not advocating for any of the bidders. The first thing that happened with this procurement was ordinance 01917, which removed the requirement of the dock and market house enterprise fund groups. Got rid of those so that the operating expenses would be reported in the general fund. I thought I heard somebody say that that was going to contribute to transparency, but of course, what it does, it eliminates the possibility that the, that the public can monitor the expenses that are going on in connection with the market house. I was finally able to get a copy of the RFP and I noticed, this sounds like a technicality, but it could be a pretty serious matter. Apparently, rent is no longer paid after the extension price is remitted. So the option to extend appears to be an option to purchase. And if the courts, if the courts rule that way, because the vague way things are, if in fact, there was a lawsuit and the court said that in fact it was a purchase, the legislation did not provide for anyone to purchase the market house. I think that needs to be examined. I've personally contracted with the federal government for over 25 years and I have never in my life seen an RFP that did not have clear evaluation criteria for selection. I can't even, it just doesn't compute. And furthermore, the public is not allowed to see the economic portion of the proposals that have, that have been presented. Now the bidder's costs are apparently going to be heavily subsidized and just wondering what's going to happen and how the public can transparently see what's going on. There are no selection criteria, we don't know what's being bid, we don't know what the economic deal is going to be. According to the public records, the new Chipotle just across, you know, a few steps across the way are paying $65 a square foot, I would imagine, plus, plus property tax and, and other things. Are we going to charge that to the winning bidder? That's a recent, a recent comparable. I think these concerns, as examples, bring the entire procurement process into question. And of course, the bigger problem is the big rush. That's the problem. The general public is, is here tonight to comment on the parts of the bids that we've been allowed to see, yet the bidders have not even presented their proposals to the City Council and they're not going to do so until Thursday, July 20th at a work session where they each get 15 minutes. The City Council's scheduled to select the winning bidder by July 31st. Is this serious? Is, what is going on here? Now, I can tell you that in, in the Ward One area, the general feeling is that people are generally frustrated and annoyed to the history of the market house. It's obvious to everyone that this has been squeezed into the election year calendar and for obvious political purposes. This is not likely to end well. We've got a long history of things not ending well for the market house. It was vacant for 10 years, we spent millions of dollars. Then the last four years, the current tenant has, has, it's consistently declined over the last four years. So we look at the, the, the other bidder that has been highly present here tonight. Both the present, the present tenant and Gavin's proposal both call for alcoholic beverages and loud music. And I can tell you, those are unacceptable to the residents in the, in the historic district near, near the, near the market house. So one of the bidders, as we know, is running for mayor. Is he going to become his own tenant? Is he going to become his own landlord? Without even talking about the existing properties that he has that, that are subject to regular inspection, this is a terrific conflict of interest. I don't see how that would work. My point here tonight is that this is, that this is an unrealistic rush. We're down to three bidders. We need something considered and calm, something like this gentleman has proposed. We need to figure out what we want to do with the market house, not try to make political points in a political year, in an election year. So my request, and the request of many people that I know in Ward One, is that we either cancel or defer this procurement.
I'm going to, I have to ask you to summarize.
That is my summary.
Oh, thank you.
Is that we ask that this procurement be canceled or deferred until next year, when it can be considered carefully and calmly and we can come up at last with a good solution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Littman, sir? Mr. Clausen? Mr. Clausen?
If I may ask you a brief question. I'm not going to debate with you, I just want to understand your position on one point more, with more clarity. The lease ends this December. If we followed your advice and canceled this and postponed a decision till next year, what do you suggest should happen when the lease expires?
Well, the lease provides for extension, either month-to-month or you could negotiate with the current tenant for an extension. If he were unwilling to do that, I think that would be an indication of what kind of person he is to do business with as far as the city's concerned, in terms of his future interest in the procurement. But I think it should be delayed as long as is necessary.
Okay. Thank you for your answer.
Hello, I'll try to keep this short. My name is Steve Corkhill. I'm a design professional, registered architect, working on many restaurants and entertainment pieces in the Del Marva region. I'm, I'm an advocate for the New Market proposal and I just want to bring up a few things that I, I believe, I speak for several other design professionals who have looked at all of these in an objective, objective way and, and find that this proposal has by far the, some of the, the most or best chance at, at success. And I think the theme that I find with the New Market proposal is one of enhancement of experience and the experience, I think, is enhanced through several ways. Their, their ideas about the external use and their, their subtle and, and gentle use of the internal building and also their, their thoughtful idea of local foods, farmer's markets and, and that. I speak of the examples with the internal uses. The reality of what they're doing is highly commonsensical for creating an experience that is not restaurant-like as, as it is a gathering place. It, it does not try to add too mu-- too mu-- many tables, does not try to add too much program or use and allows for a place that can be easily moved in and out of for our residents and our tourists. And it, in that way, it creates a lot of excitement in this community that I've been hearing about several, for several weeks. The external uses and their idea of opening up and creating more permeability at the street is, is, can be highly successful. We all, many of us see how that works. street is, is, can be highly successful. We all, many of us see how that works in the West Street area over the last 10 years or so. So that, the idea of a market that can spill out on the right days of the week to the backside of the Market House, the idea of an open zone that literally others can come in with food from other areas of the city and come and eat and be part of the, the street atmosphere is a, is a very big strength. And then lastly, the food experience. The city, and many of us who have lived here our whole lives, have watched some of the local foods sort of go away. The, the real need for people who really understand oysters and the like, and how raw bars actually work is very exciting for all of us, I think. And then, of course, the farmer's market. I mean, this is a way to create the ability for a more diverse experience and the ability for a lot of different price points for people to come down who both live here and, and move through as tourists to experience what the city has provided in the past. So again, I'm a big advocate for the new market proposal. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Amy Crone, and I wanted to take this opportunity to introduce myself and my organization to the council and offer our assistance to any of the bidders that are accepted. I am the founder and executive director of the Maryland Farmers Market Association. So we work with the 150 markets throughout the state in various capacities. And I was actually the market manager for the Fresh Farm Market in downtown Annapolis when it first opened in 2008. So we have experience starting, working with, and expanding access to farmers' markets throughout the state. And one of our cornerstone programs actually addresses low-income access to markets. It's called Maryland Market Money. And we fundraise private matching dollars so that low-income participants that have federal benefits can spend those benefits at the market and have extra dollars to be spent there as well. So we work with some 400 farmers across the state, upwards of 1,000 vendors, all said and done through all the various markets. And we would be happy to offer assistance, whether it be technical or thinking through what I think is an excellent idea to have a plan for the Market House in terms of what the future looks like. And I am also a, I was born and raised in Annapolis County. So my hope is that the Market House will be a wonderful place for the community to come to in the future. So thank you for hearing everyone's comments this evening, and thank you for your time.
Let's try this again. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. At the Market House right now, there is a slushy machine, a candy store, and deep fryers that permeate the air when you go through that building. And it breaks my heart. For those of you who've known me and worked with me the last 14 years, you know I love this city and I love promoting it. What I would ask of you is this. You know the history of those business folks who have submitted proposals. It doesn't require a deep dive. You know whether they love this building and love this community and want the same things for it as do I and do you. So please, I urge you, when you're considering these proposals, don't just look at the numbers, which I know many of you, and that's usually not your case. Please look at the genuineness of the organization of the business folks, the group that wants to preserve this wonderful landmark and something that I would be proud to sell. And I agree with the folks that have said that visitors want to go where the locals go. So please provide that for the several million people who come here every year and love this city. Thank you for your consideration.
Ms. Delcignore, you mentioned something about the deep fryers. And I think one of the hallmarks of the Market House, growing up, is being able to get fried chicken. That was there beforehand and it was brought back. So what's your objection to having deep fryers?
My objection is walking through there, as I did today, and the stench is unbearable. So someone needs to do something about that. The original Market House, well, not original, but when I came here 14 years ago, it had a different feel in my mind. The only thing that Market House needed was a broom to clean it up a little, a little more air conditioning. But it's appalling, the state of it now, and I, it's difficult for me to go through there and enjoy it. Because if you're eating a slushy and smelling deep fry, I don't know, it doesn't seem congruous to me that that would be enjoyable.
I'd say it doesn't smell like deep fry. It smells like fried chicken, but to each their own. Anyone else?
Yes, hello. My name is Eugenia Magafan. I live at 31 Water Street in City Gate. I've owned that property for over 29 years, and I've seen a lot of change since I've been there. When the Market House closed down, we expected something better. What we got was disappointment. And over the years, it has not gotten better. We deserve more. I'm confident that the new market group can revitalize the Market House. I base that confidence on their contribution and efforts on what I can only call the magical transformation on West Street. Don't forget, I've been there for 29 years. I've been to West Street, well, I've been to that, those first couple of blocks. I urge the city council to approve the proposal so that they can transform the Market House into something the locals will use, the tourists will enjoy, and more importantly, that Annapolis deserves and we can all be proud of. Thank you.
I listened to all these fine people talk this evening. And they certainly have some very, very excellent ideas. But there are certain things that I think that the people here tonight do not understand about the Market House. Number one, it's nice to be able to do anything with the outside of the Market House you'd like to do. I would also like to do it. The city, on the last administration, came to me and asked me if I could get the Market House open. I opened it up and I rented three stalls. The Market House is totally controlled and managed by the city, not by the stall operators. The proposal today that is out is to turn it over to a management company and let the management company decide what they would like to have. We have been in there almost five years. We took an empty floor that had failed multiple times and been closed up many years and to date has spent $900,000. We have not made one penny of profit in the Market House. We are very, very limited by the hood space because of the structure in the roof, so what we can cook. It was asked if we would put back fried chicken, Monchurian chicken. We went, we bought two broasters that are totally enclosed. They're pressure cookers. It was asked if we would put back Hannan oysters. We requested at the time to get a beer and wine license. The city said we could not do that. We put oysters in, like Hannan used to have. We put in vegetables on some of the things, and apples, oranges, they didn't sell. And I listened to a lot of local people that have been in the audience and some that have left. And they make the statement, this is not for locals. We get quite a few locals, and quite a few of them that spoke this evening come into the Market House. And they come into the coffee shop, they buy, they spend money, they talk, they eat outside. We have many people that are employed at the Market House of all different faiths and colors. If we maintain and stay in the Market House and are allowed to do what we would like to do, we will do the best job of anybody. We talk about entrepreneurs. We talk about experience. We talk about people. We got it all. We've had it all. And we've kept the Market House. When three tenants failed a year and a half ago and tried to sell their leases, and they only had a year and a half left, and were ready to close down, we paid those tenants money to take over the shop. Yes, there's a candy shop that maybe some of you don't like, but we threw it in, in place of a Good Life Vitamin Shop. And a Slurpee Shop because the smoothies weren't selling to add to that and certain things. We've spent, as you heard me say, $900,000 in the Market House already. I'm not going to spend any more money with a year and a half left on the lease, now the lease that expires this coming December, until we know in which direction the city's going to point us in, whether it be us or whether it be a competitor. We don't worry about competition. We never have, we never will, and you've never seen us ever in downtown Annapolis, and we have multiple businesses, ever fight a liquor license or oppose a liquor license. We don't mind competition. We love it. And if it's good competition, it only brings more people. But what everybody must remember, we talked about, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, and we're going to employ this partner and that partner, and we're going to have these people. Market House is only so big. You've got only so much hood space. You can only cook in so much area, which restricts what you have and as many items. You have only so much storage space, only so much refrigeration space. That makes a difference. You've got to know what's happening there. You've got to understand, if you say you're going to cook and you're going to do this, you cannot change that hood system the way it is now. We're as big as we can get. And we were with the structural engineers, the people. If we're going to put fold-up doors or fold-up windows, whatever competition is talking about, it's got to be approved by historic Annapolis and the various people that have to approve these approvals. I don't think it's ever going to happen because the Market House goes way back as an old building, and it will stay on the outside as it is. We've had lighting problems. And when I say lighting problems, if you ride around there at nighttime with all the lights on, it looks very dark. And the fact is that we haven't been able to manage the Market House. We have only been able to manage our own shops. We can dictate the hours as a whole. And every time another food place opens up, you've had a couple of them open up since the Market House, maybe three of them, every food establishment, because of the limitations on parking, takes away a little bit of the business. It may only take away $5,000 a year. But since we've been in there, our business has been going up. We took a closed shop, a shop that was closed down for multiple years, and you don't open the doors, and the floodgates open and the water runs in. You open the doors, you do everything that you know how to do right, and you build a business. And we talk about personalities. We have some pretty good personalities. But the people that we employ are employees of the type that we give everybody a chance. We give people that probably aren't employable in certain areas a job. We feed the homeless, and this is a public place. The homeless come into our place. They sit there in the morning. The city knows this. We don't chase them out. We'll give them a free coffee, or we'll give them something else. And we do that in all of our establishments. Unfortunately, they have that problem. But the thing is, the city must realize the economics of a business, the people here, they get up, they're parading, and which, I compliment them, they've done a very nice job this evening, and they're clapping and politicking and everything else, which is nice. And Gavin, and Mary, I don't know the other operator, they're all professionals, every single one of them. And every one that is put in a bid has the capabilities of running the Market House, whether they have the necessary funds to keep it open, or whether they have the necessary wherewithal to store food. Because you can't sell a million hot dogs or a million hamburgers of lots of fried chicken if you don't have a place to store it. Nobody's ever thought of that. We happen to have our facilities across the street. We're off-premise with storage. So if you have a busy day, we have it. Now, maybe they have the wherewithal to have a truck every hour delivered to them. But there's a lot of negatives at the Market House. And we've taken all of those negatives because of our businesses and our wherewithal, and we've turned them around, and we're headed in the right direction. Untie our hands, and we can do whatever the city wants. We can do whatever the local people wants. But for the last four and a half years, in the operations that we have, our hands have been tied. In this Market House, these are individual stalls that were rented to individual places. It's not like one person has the entire Market House and is running it. This man knows. And I go back in the time that when you were in there. I know all. I know Kaufman and all of them, you know, so I can, I can name them all. But the entrepreneurs that have bid this, they're great people. And if the city chooses to give it to them, we'll help them as much as we can. But there's a curve on that Market House, on growing and getting there, and you better have good financial backing, because the Market House has been unprofitable. Okay? But it's going in the right direction. The city has our figures. They know what it is. We pay our rent every month. We do what we're supposed to do every month. The city has never had to come after us. It has not been that way with other tenants. So the only thing that I say to all of you, I hope this little speech has given you a little education of what's going on. We're here. We've been in Annapolis probably longer than most of the people that have spoken this evening. We've never closed a business. We have over 1,000 employees working for us. We have multiple companies. We're a very, very diversified company. We're a management company. Our proposal to the city is basically, they don't have to take care of a thing. Okay? We're capable of taking care of everything, all the maintenance and everything else, which is a big plus, because the city has been very, very busy on maintaining that building in the last four years. And it will continue depending on what somebody else is able to do. But the only thing is, I say thank you to all of us, thank you to all the speakers that have been here, and I wish everybody good luck.
Alderman Arnett?
Mr. Blonder, I wanted to ask, what I will admit are a couple of rhetorical questions, and so I'm really asking it of all the proposers that are here, because it's things that we will have to grapple with. I've heard Mr. Roper, a nearby neighbor, talk about alcohol, whether alcohol, not alcohol, I think is going to be a very important question for us to consider on the council. I've also heard proposals to open up the Market House. I want to know, and I will, will be asking this in the work session, are we talking about physically opening up the sides of the Market House?
Well, let me, let me, let me help you here. First off the bat, we would love to open the sides up. We would love to take the sides off, and we would love to do other things. That was not in our proposal.
No, I know.
Beer and wine wasn't our proposal.
Right. Okay. So just, I know from previous experience that the county health department won't let us open up the sides. They're afraid of vermin and insects getting in. I'm not sure about that. But I think when we have our work session on the 20th for everybody here, these are some of the things I at least will be thinking about. And I, and I took Mr. Clausen's testimony to heart and others about the concern about adding more alcohol and noise and so forth downtown. So just everybody, from a rhetorical question point of view, please be thinking about that when you come to the work session before the council on the 20th. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'll be quick. I'm Deborah Parton. I live at 507 Cooper Road, Annapolis. And I retired after 33 years as an engineer with Westinghouse and then Northrop Grumman. And I'm, I'm only going to comment about this business of a potential delay and going back to the drawing board. And what I would say here, the proposals in which I participated were, of course, solicited by a government agency. We responded. They typically were in excess of $100 million. These were not small projects. A bid, a request for proposal would usually come out early November, and we would have to have responded by about December 20th, and the selection would be over by January 15th. And sometimes there would be, well, there would always be criteria for selection in the proposal, but many times the agency receiving proposals does not really understand the capability of each bidder. And so very frequently, we would put something in our proposals that they didn't ask for, but we thought they might like to have, and that there would be a price on it. And so things aren't perfect. You don't say, well, you have to do A, B, and C, and three bidders come in and propose A, B, and C in different forms. That's not how a significant value proposal and request for proposal is done. Once you select what you think is the best person that can do the job, you do have the option of then going into negotiations. Maybe you like some of what they said, but you didn't like it all. Maybe they proposed alcohol and you didn't want alcohol. I don't know. But once you see all the proposals, you will know what But once you see all the proposals, you will know what, what you think is the best bidder. You select that bidder, and then you work it out with them as to what you want and what they can do and for what price. It's very simple, and I see nothing to be gained by waiting months and years. I think we've waited long enough.
Last call, is there anyone else? Seeing no movement, I declare the public hearing closed. We're going to take a 10-minute break and reassess.
Before we break, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out and speaking on the Market House tonight. All your input has been wonderful.
Hopefully be quick. The city council is now back in session. We'll pick up where we left off. And Madam City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
All right. Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is legislative actions on second read, beginning with resolutions R-2116, R-2316, R-2416. Assistant City Attorney Gary Elson is here to answer questions and provide a brief update about what's going on with those. He's also submitted staff reports that you should all have.
Mr. Elson?
Good evening, Council. Gary Elson, Assistant City Attorney. I, to my left here is...
He's here for moral support.
He's also here to answer questions. We looked at the annexation resolutions, which have been postponed several times now, every 90 days, and we wanted to give you an update on where we are with the annexations that are at issue in the three resolutions. So I prepared something addressing that, and I know there was some difficulty opening what was uploaded at first, so I know Alderman Arnett said he hasn't read what I wrote. I don't know if anybody else has not at this point, but I can... What was that?
I read it now.
Oh, you just read it? Okay. Essentially, what I have said about each of the three resolutions is that no council action, in my opinion, and I think, you know, Acting City Attorney Ashley Leonard also agrees, and I think Mr. Gutwold also agrees, that no action is really required of the city council at this time. And I attempted to explain why by just giving the status of these resolutions. So I can, I can go over, you know, summarize what I've said, or I can just answer questions, whatever your pleasure is.
Alderman Arnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me just recap. My sense was that we postponed because there were to be ongoing negotiations with basically the same lawyer for all three.
Yeah.
I don't have the sense that there have been ongoing negotiations.
Well, when, when you say ongoing, we, we have met, Mr. Gutwold and I, and met with Alan Hyatt, who represents most of these annex, annexation clients of his. And we, we met recently with the city manager and Ashley Leonard also, I guess it was about a month ago or so, with Alan Hyatt. And we went over each of the annexations that he is involved with, and came to some conclusions about what should be done there. I think we, there's a consensus that was reached at that time, and I can tell you what that is, but it's actually summarized here.
Mm-hmm.
So when you say ongoing, you're right. It didn't take as long as we thought it would take, and Crystal Springs changed so much over, over time, since we were before the Rules Committee and since the original annexations were introduced, that because it has changed so much, it made it easier to, to come to some conclusions as to how to deal with it at this point.
But, but that raises a question in my mind, that it, the ownership changed, or even that the proposal changed, doesn't seem, and talking about Crystal Springs specifically, doesn't seem to abrogate the requirement that water and sewer be extended to a single property.
It doesn't, it doesn't abrogate it.
So, but on the other hand, I find it, and I'm just speaking for myself here, hard to believe that we, our choice is because water wasn't extended within 10 years to that one property, whether it's a residence or a business, I think they both need water and sewer, that we would abrogate an entire annexation.
Well, we're not recommending that. There was a public facilities agreement, as I think you all know, which has quite a few provisions in it, and it's still a viable agreement. It's just that the project itself has changed. The agreement is, governs what is left of the property, the annexed property, minus the CCRC, I believe. The CCRC, the, you know, Continuing Care Center, is now, there's different ownership. They have filed an application for a special exception for, you know, continuing care retirement community, and that, I don't, I'm not sure how many acres that is, Pete, do you know? They haven't filed? Oh, I thought they had filed. Okay. So, so the intention is, is for the CCRC to file an application for a special exception, and that is not going to be governed, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that is going to be governed by the public facilities agreement that governs Crystal Springs, or whatever they're called right now.
Yeah, wrong, correct.
Yeah. So they're going to go in under, assuming they file their application under a typical special exception application, and they'll be subject to all of the review criteria that is in the code. If, there's never been an application filed for Crystal Springs. I, I have to correct something there. I said that the application had been withdrawn, but there has never been an application filed for Crystal Springs. So they are not pursuing their application at this time. Assuming they pursue their application, they will be governed by the public facilities agreement that exists unless we amend it, and we are recommending that they're that exists unless we amend it, and we are recommending that there be some amendments to that agreement, which are indicated in the...
Two quick questions. One, do you, maybe Mr. Gutwold would know, have any idea how much it would cost to extend water and sewer down to that singular building? And two, in any of the plans, was there a proposal to retain that building? In other words, let's say it costs, let's make it simple, $100,000 to extend that lines down to provide water and sewer for that building? And then you destroy the building and do other things with that space. Is it, was it ever realistic or fair for us to require that they provide that when the reality is that the building probably wouldn't exist and whole new water and sewer lines were likely to have to be run into the property?
I think that's part of the issue, is that, you know, typically, when you have, when they, when the annexations come online and public facilities agreements are put together, it's usually within a short period of time associated with the development of the project, and that's not what happened here. The project morphed over many, many years. So what they anticipated happening did not occur. So the idea of what, you know, those are standard boilerplate languages, is to provide water and sewer to any or associated properties that are around there. It's typical in any municipality, actually, to have, you know, the services to places that existed at that time and continue to exist, you would provide the public water and sewer to them.
So, okay, I was just going to add to that, that, first of all, I don't think the one-year requirement is realistic. You know, you have to get water and sewer to the occupied dwellings at the time of the annexation, within one year after the annexation. One year clearly is not realistic. We have another annexation, the Rogers annexation, where we're going, it's going through the same problem years and years later. In that case, there was an occupied dwelling, and there still is an occupied dwelling, and that person is resisting certain things that developers trying to do. And so, and then all the litigation that Crystal Springs got involved in, it's just not realistic to think that one year from the date of annexation, you're going to have water and sewer to the dwelling that's occupied there. And also because the cost is, I know you just, you said $100,000 is just a figure out there. The cost is huge, from what we understand, to get water and sewer all the way from the back of the property to the connection, which is, I think, closer to the front of the property. So, yeah, so, you know, it's just a huge expense. So looking back on it, it wasn't, I don't think it was realistic to put that in there.
Right. So the question I'm asking myself, and I put to my colleagues on the council, are several-fold. One of them is, was it really a realistic contract agreement to begin with? Secondly, would we really consider calling into default at this point? And if we were to do that, what kind of solution would we require? And would we really consider this to be of a magnitude such that we would actually declare the annexation null and void? It would be a pretty, pretty big step. And so it seems to me we have a couple of courses. We can postpone, and Alderman Budgen for me, there still would be time for it to come up again after ninety days before it sunny dies, but if we're going to postpone now, it's not clear to me we won't postpone again, and then this legislation is going to die with the end of this term. Or do we want to go ahead and address the underlying issues and just dispose of these resolutions? And I'm not proposing either course, but I am seriously questioning why we're prolonging the agony if we're not really intending to do it.
I guess it's always possible. Things can change in the next three months. It's not likely. But Alderman Budge is correct. Three months from now is the last meeting in October, so it will come up again, okay, in three more months. Yeah. But I think, I think it's, I think it's a good thing to amend these agreements right now. These agreements are not going to be canceled. These agreements go on. And I think that to make them more realistic, it's better to amend rather than just, you know, just give up on trying to get anything done. We don't know if some of these annexations will ever have applications for, you know, for plan development, and I expect some of them may never. I think there's one out there that, I'm not, I can't recall which one it is right now, but it's one of these that are mentioned in the annexation resolutions, that there's no application in there, there's no anticipation of any construction on the property at all. They're, I don't know what the reason is. It could be financial, it could be otherwise. But I think the best thing to do is, we have two, in two of these resolutions, we do have public facilities agreements that the attorney for the developers, who is Mr. Hyatt, has agreed with us to amend. In Crystal Springs, I think there's three provisions that we would want amended. In Rogers, there's one that we would want amended. And then the others don't have public facilities agreements because they were annexed prior to the time when code change and public facilities agreements were required. So we don't even have, you know, PFAs to amend in those cases. One of them is Rocky Gorge, which is so far down the road, you know, at this point, I mean, they've been before the Planning Commission, they were before the Planning Commission again on a modification, which was not successful. There's, they have vested, their plan development approval has vested, meaning they can't take it away from them. It would be illegal to take it away from them. And they have started, they've graded on the property, some trees have come down. I mean, they're just so far into the process that there's really nothing to do in Rocky Gorge at this point, except they'll start, you know, they've got all the approvals they need. They need building permits, I guess, but they have, they've already graded on the property, and they've got a grading permit, obviously. So, you know, there's nothing to do there at all. I just think that, the way I look at these things right now, is that they need to be encouraged to go forward under amended public facilities agreements, and then once we amend Rogers and Crystal Springs, if we do that, then it's up to them to come forward. But at least we've dealt with them and gotten rid of the provisions that shouldn't be in there, amended the provisions that should be, and one of which I want to speak to real briefly is the Relief Road, which I think everybody knows about. Rocky Gorge was to build part of the Relief Road. I think another one with Crystal Springs, I think, was supposed to build its part of the Relief Road, parallel to Forest Drive. And back when the Relief Road requirement was imposed upon these planned developments, it was a feasible idea. In the 2014 comprehensive plan review, or just, you know, the review after five years, there is a provision in there that says that it was determined, you know, after consideration, complete consideration, that it's no longer feasible to put a relief road in there. A lot of people were saying, demanding that the developers put in this relief road, but the comprehensive plan already has said that it's not feasible. So we want to get the relief road provision out of these public facilities agreements. It's not going to happen, you know, and, you know, and so that's one of the things that we do want to do in the Rogers and Crystal Springs public facilities agreement. So, you know, based on this, I'm just summarizing what I've written in here, but I, I just think from a legal standpoint that there's nothing that the council can do at this point, except try to make these public facilities agreements more realistic and amend them so that we can extend the time for water and sewer connection, because as I said before, you know, looking back on it, I don't think the one-year, you know, allowance to get connected was practical or feasible. It just was something that was never going to happen. Then get these one-year extensions up to ten years, but you can see after ten years all the things that happened, you know, litigation and disputes and things like that. So, you know, I think one of the things that I recommend is that we extend the water sewer connection for another three years to give them a chance to actually get it done, and with other extensions, but for good caution, which the director would have to determine. Anyway...
So the last half of the last sentence of each of your recommendations is the law office is not recommending any council action at this time.
Correct.
That's our best thing, taking no action, so...
I think that we haven't taken action since they were first introduced, so it's nothing new. But I just don't, I don't know what the council could do at this point, really, to, you know, to make these resolutions any better. I think the best thing to do is let's work on the public facilities agreements that we have for the two annexations, and on the other annexations, there's nothing happening anyway at this point. So, you know, that's why, you know, I can't, I can't think of what the council could do.
Alderman Budge?
Yeah, so you mentioned that we need to work on revising these public facility agreements. If the public facility agreement is revised, does that have to come before the council, and in what form?
I don't think it does, because the annexation resolution, the resolution that brought Crystal Springs and Rogers into the city provided for a public facilities agreement. So we have the public facilities agreement, and it's between the city of Annapolis and the developer at that time. And the public facilities agreements don't get, as far as I know, they don't get reviewed by council. We can certainly give you information you need. We can take recommendations from the council as to what you would want us to do, but I don't think the agreements themselves get approved by council. The resolutions allowing the agreements got approved by the council in the first place.
Okay. So then, I know my colleague from Ward Eight would like us to do nothing, but that isn't an option. We have to either approve these, maybe with amendments, postpone, or kill them?
Right. Well, I didn't, I didn't mean that you don't have to do something tonight. You do have to do something tonight. You know, if you want the resolutions to go on, obviously you need to postpone again. I mean, yeah, if you want these resolutions, R 21, R 23, and R 24 to continue on, then you either have to postpone them or take some other type of action so that they don't die.
Are they serving a useful function at this point?
I think so, because I think, you know, they can always provide a little bit of leverage, you know, if we need it, you know, so that's, you know, that's my view of it. I don't see any reason to kill the resolutions right now. They've only got another ninety days to go before that might happen anyway. So there's no reason to take that action tonight, at least that's my opinion.
Alderman Littman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple thoughts. On the issue of running the city water line, your recommendations make sense to me to give not only the entity in this case, but in the other two, more time to do it. I'm a lot more concerned about your other two points from R 2116. First, about the construction of the Forest Drive Relief Road. I have heard over and over again that part of the negotiation at the time was that that entity was going to help support that, and that was going to be at a considerable cost. And I've heard numbers, though now it's not worth repeating the numbers, but it was millions of dollars. So if we're just going to, if we're going to respond to the comprehensive plan update that took out the Relief Road, the thoughts that I have heard over and over again is that that entity should be redirected to put that money towards other traffic improvements. If it's not going to be the Relief Road, it shouldn't just be a free pass, and they get a deal. So I'd be very concerned about just eliminating that requirement without any change. Second, or the third provision in your paragraph, the second one that I'm concerned about, is eliminating the seventy-five acre conservation parcel requirement. That's also something that I heard over and over again about how important that was, and how people wanted to see that in writing before anything got proposed, and that's a major issue. So I don't want to, by any means, support the idea that we're just going to strike that requirement without any offset.
I've already made that comment.
Pete spanked me for that. But I, but I, I didn't write in here that we should eliminate it. I just said it may have to be refigured based on what is left of Crystal Springs less the CCRC land. So by no means do I believe that it should be stricken. And Pete told me today that it should just stay.
It needs to be delineated. They know that straight up. And I should mention about the Relief Road. We're not calling it the Relief Road, but it is a parallel road that we are asking for and requiring, so...
So I think all that needs to be transparent. The public needs to see all this, and so I want to be careful that transparent, we get that transparency. We get a chance for the public to see what we're doing and not just let this go.
Yeah. I mean, we can report back to the council as to how we're, you know, I mean, let's put it this way. We're not going to look for signatures until the council is informed about, you know, how we're going to propose to amend these documents, and then, you know, just take, we can take recommendations from the council.
So, just to help me understand, is the forum to get those changes, these resolutions? Or do you want these resolutions to go away and make those changes in another vehicle?
I don't think the resolutions need to go away tonight. It's not going to make a difference, you know, if you postpone them or not. I just think that there's no reason not to postpone them tonight. But the amendments to the PFAs will be just like a contract, you know, the PFAs are a contract, and we will do an amendment. I'm sure the title will be Amendment to Public Facilities Agreement, and we'll just indicate that all provisions remain the same except the following. And then we can, we can always come back to the council at its next meeting and indicate, you know, what we propose, and, you know, get recommendations from the council.
Well, I would, at least for, I for one would strongly encourage making that progress with all due haste to get that settled before this council term is over and get it done in public, and...
We will. We will.
So I'll move for postponement for ninety days. Sixty days for R 2116 on the vice of Mike Kirby.
Is there any other discussion on this? Alderman Finlayson?
I just want to make sure that this is doable in the time that we have. Our law department is somewhat inundated, I believe. So is it, and I'm asking the two of you, is this something you can do within the time that we've just outlined?
I think so.
Are you going to drop all of our, rest of our stuff?
No. No. Mr. Hyatt seems very amenable, and he's already talked to his clients to sort of get the ball rolling. So we're, you know, we're not, we've started the process of, Mr. Elson has started the process with Mr. Hyatt to get this rolling, and the amendments are not massive overhauls. So I believe we're able to do it without dropping everything else.
Yeah, I agree with Ms. Lannister. The amendments are not problematic. And there's not that many of them, so we can get it done and give you an update whenever you want it. When do you want the, what? How about midnight? When do you want the update? Sixty days or before sixty days, I guess? Next council?
He didn't mean that. Sixty days. Okay, thank you.
I guess we're talking about the first meeting in September?
That's September 11th.
Is there any other discussion?
That's ironic.
All those in favor of...
I'm revising my motion to be postponement to September 11th.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Madam City Attorney, please present the next item.
I believe that the agenda has been completed at this point.
Don't we need to do resolutions 23 and 24, or is that all together?
The Rogers, yep. I'm sure we're going to do the same thing, but protect the talent.
That was for Catherine Properties, I'm guessing, R 2116. So the next item would be R 2316, which is Rogers' property.
Is there a motion to postpone until the first meeting in September?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Madam City Attorney?
And the last item is R 2416, which is a variety of annexation resolution properties.
Is there a motion to postpone to the first meeting in September?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Madam City Attorney?
All right. Now the agenda has been completed, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Littman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, I have very good news to share that we received from Maria, Director Broadbent, today. DNR has approved the changes to the city's Forest Conservation Act. If you remember, after we did the first act, DNR had to get approval. We got that, and then we did the amendments, which were called No Net Loss, and a number of other changes. We didn't get feedback from DNR until the session closed and the state act went in place. That has happened, and now DNR has blessed it, so we're official. That has happened, and now DNR has blessed it, so we're official.
Thank you. Very good news.
Yeah. Yay us.
Yay.
Alderman Budge?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, as one of the sponsors and with the consent of the co-sponsor, I would like to propose the withdrawal of O-3117, the moratorium on planned developments. The Planning Commission met earlier, what met last week on this, and gave us a resounding no thank you.
Actually, I would say they gave us a very thoughtful no thank you. And it was a four to three, so it was very close. But I do want to, I thought the Planning Commission gave us very serious consideration. They raised some very important points, and, you know, that's why we have a planning commission, so we don't just railroad things through from the council. So I would certainly support withdrawing it. We'll live to fight another day and come back with a more refined proposal.
Alderman Pinto Charles?
Yes. I would request, Madam Clerk, that you add me as a co-sponsor of Resolution 2217, the climate agreement.
Okay.
Thank you.
A couple housekeeping items. The next meeting will be July 31st. The upcoming election deadlines are as follows. July 31st, to file a certificate of candidacy, accept write-ins, the deadline for filing a petition for nomination by petition, and the deadline to certify ballot questions to the Board of Supervisor Elections. Also, the City Council won't meet in the month of August. And that's it. If there's nothing else, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
How did we do that without Brad?
I know.
Call and FaceTime them in. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting is adjourned.